Sorry about that.
Make me feel good.
Get your mic on, Spence?
I do now.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the December twenty-second meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Dennison. Thank you all for being here with us this morning. And that being said, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and our first order of business will be roll call.
Mike Davis.
Here.
Spence Redwine.
Here.
Charlie Shear.
Here.
Mary Carum.
Here.
And Susan Arthur.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all. Okay, a little housekeeping before we get started this morning. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body, which means that the decisions we make with this board will be passed on to the city council for final approval, with the exception of site plans and plats. Our decisions on those are final. And so we're gonna get into our meeting this morning. I think we only have one case on our agenda today, so it's gonna make it pretty easy. We're gonna give you the opportunity to come forward and speak either in favor or in opposition to the request. We'll ask that you hold your comments to no more than three minutes, and be courteous of other folks who are speaking. When you come to the lectern, I ask that you would give us your name and address for the record, and then you're free to speak, and then we'll ask you to remain at the lectern, so in case the commission might have questions for the speaker. That being said, Mr., let's see, we gotta act on the minutes for this meeting and for the last meeting? Are we doing that?
We don't have, those will be on the first agenda in January.
In January, okay, all right. All right, then we'll go to item five A this morning. Mr. Medina?
Thank you, good morning, everyone. Glad to see you again. This is item five A. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lots twenty, forty-one, and forty-two, and a portion of an abandoned right-of-way to be known as the replat of College Country Estates, Grayson County, Texas, four nine-nine-one acres, in the J.C. London survey abstract number seven-five-two. This is case number twenty-twenty dash one-twenty-five MP. The applicant is requesting approval of the proposed replat. The replat meets all City of Dennison subdivision requirements. There are no variances being requested. City staff recommends approval. We have received two letters of opposition here, which I can hand these up to y'all right now. This is the subject property outlined in yellow. As you can see, it's along Woodview Terrace, just south of College Creek Drive, north of the Grayson College. This is the proposed replat. The proposed replat takes the just under five acres and turns it into five-acre lots. The motion that you'll see in your packet, the recommended motion, is approval of the proposed replat, pending final engineering approval for required infrastructure plans. That's because, meeting with our public works director, there is a two-inch water line that runs north to south along Woodview Road, Woodview Terrace. However, that two-inch line needs to be upsized. The developer has agreed to upsize that line from a two-inch to an eight-inch, in addition to also adding a fire suppression or a fire hydrant in the area to serve those new homes. So, again, we recommend approval of the plat as it meets the requirements, however, pending final review of the engineering plans. And we should be expecting those pretty soon, within a matter of weeks. Our public works department is working with the developer on getting those. And that's pretty standard with development across the board, is reviewing of the final engineering plans before filing the plat. So I'm present for any questions that you may have, and we recommend approval.
Any questions of staff?
I've got one question. Is there a plan, do you know, for connecting the dots on the roads from Eastwood Terrace Drive going west?
No, ma'am. It's my understanding that that property, that you see, you could probably see it better on the plat, maybe. No, you can't. The east-to-west connectors was abandoned by the county quite some time back, so I don't think that would occur.
Okay. I just, I guess I'm kinda curious to know where the property line for the college is. It's been nice, when you visit the campus at the culinary, to have the view of that little pond and all, and, you know, it would be nice to keep that ambiance that's there.
So the location of that pond looks like it's within the property boundaries of the college, so I'd...
Of the college?
Correct.
So I'm guessing that that black line is pretty much the property line for the college?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
All right, is the applicant here this morning? Nope. Okay. All righty. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Yes, sir. Just give your name and address for the record. You can take your mask off while you're talking to us.
My name is Freddie Tunnel. My wife and I live at seventy-three Woodview Terrace, which is on the west side of Woodview Terrace, across the road from where this proposal is being presented to you guys. It is, it's quite interesting. The property that this is referring to is approximately three-hundred-and-ninety feet. And in that three-hundred-and-ninety-feet length, this replat is wanting to add three homes in that distance. Across the road, on the west side, there's one home on approximately five acres. The replat does not tell us what the setback is between the three lots. So, there is a electrical service line that runs on the south side of lot number four. So I'm assuming that they have to have a setback of at least twenty feet for the electrical service. And I also would assume that, since it's not stated, that they're going to allow twenty-five feet setback on each side of the property lines for lots two, three, and four. So, if you take that into consideration, in lot number four, there is approximately seventy-three feet for the width of a home, and there would be then a hundred feet between home on lot four and the home on lot three. And if you just keep going across, my calculation says that there's, on lot two, you could have approximately a ninety-seven-foot span on the width of the house. On lot three, that's a seventy-five-foot span, and on lot four, a seventy-three-foot span. My point is, these houses are going to be extremely close together, which is out of step with the rest of the subdivision. I don't know if any of you have ever visited Woodview Terrace, but I would encourage you to come out and take a look. This is not in keeping with the intent of the College Creek Estate subdivision. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions, Speaker? I don't see any, thank you, sir.
So, I'm opposed to this.
Okay.
My name is Mike Collinsworth. I live with my wife at two-two-eight College Creek Drive. Where, if you look at the far north part of that, where the, right where it ends, we're right next to that. So we're basically adjacent to it, as it's across the street from us. We moved in our house about three and a half years ago, and before we did, we talked to some people that were in the development, that actually participated in the development initially. Howard Rainwater, who was one of the four original developers, who passed away this last year. Bill Dean, who also passed away about two years ago. His wife Catherine lives right behind us, and they were two of the four professors that put together the entire development. And what Howard told me when we moved in was that there would not be any other development in the entire, any other houses built in the entire development, because everybody was already residents out. Otherwise, if you had a five acres, and your house was on one of it, but you owned all five, that was considered the residence. And so basically, he said, "You're not gonna have any construction. There's one lot left to sell that has never been sold." And that, since this last year, that was sold and actually built on. So we anticipated that there would be no future development there. And what Freddie said, I would totally agree. If you would come look at the neighborhood, you'd find it's a forty-to-forty-five-year-old neighborhood. And all the lots are generally one, two, three, five, six, seven acres. In fact, Catherine behind us is eleven acres. And if people started subdividing their properties, and it would destroy the entire integrity of the neighborhood. And that's what we're opposed to, because we moved in it for one reason, and that was the neighborhood, it wasn't the house. In fact, we looked for over a year for a house in that area. I kept driving it and driving it, and finally found one. It wasn't the house that I wanted, but I wanted the neighborhood, and so we decided to buy it anyway. And so that's what we've done. Another thing is, that neighborhood has one entrance and one exit. You can't drive through the neighborhood, you can drive to it, and you've gotta come back out the same way you come in. And I don't want any additional traffic there. We have plenty of cars there already, we don't want additional cars there. It's, we walk dogs up and down the street every day, at least twice a day, and so we don't want additional traffic. Another thing is, we don't want the trash that comes with additional construction workers there. And how do I know? Because we've had it. And every time somebody does a remodel, every time there's a concrete truck comes in, in fact, the house that was just rebuilt by the same people that are going to do this, the one that they just built down the street from us, you see Coke cans, beer cans, food wrappers, and when we walk our dog, we pick them up. And, you know, I don't like to pick up other people's trash, but there's some in our yard quite a bit. So, we're opposed to it, and any questions to me?
Any questions, Speaker? Okay, thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is John Biassi. I live at forty-one Woodview Terrace, which is the one right across the street, next to Mr. Tunnel. So we purchased our house in this development about six years ago. And one of the things that brought us to this area was the fact that houses are very spread out, very wooded area. It's very, as you can see, a lot of trees on most of the properties. First thing the developer came in and did with this piece of land is cleared almost all the trees off of it. So it kinda doesn't fit with the aesthetic already, as far as what the neighborhood looks like. So that was one of the concerns I had. The other thing is, we have the restrictive covenant on the properties in the development. So my understanding of that is that you can only have one house on adjacent lots. So if you own multiple lots, you can only, as I was just mentioning, you can only have one house on multiple lots if you own them. So, one of the things is sort of, it's sort of breaking with the kind of the way the rest of the neighborhood looks, if you have multiple houses that close together. On our block there on Woodview Terrace, there's only two driveways right now. This would add an additional, more, double that, right? So we're opposed to the replat. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, Speaker? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak?
I'm Andy Boyd, seven forty-four Frankwood Drive in Sadler, Sherman, Texas. I'm the guy that's building all this, so. To get to a couple of the points, there's actually six-hundred-and-seventy-five feet of right-of-way on Woodview Terrace. The number four lot, which would be adjacent to Grayson County College, is about a hundred-and-sixty, a hundred-and-fifty-foot wide. And I don't know where the ten-foot easement or whatever. We've already got four eighty-by-eighty pads already, already in place. 'Cause I was trying to be a little bit more proactive until they said they had to upgrade it to an eight-inch water line. But as far as, and I can see the concerns with some of the people, but if you'll go College Creek Drive and go around, I just built the house out there, and it sold for a hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a square foot. I don't build junk. We clean up after ourselves, we do all that. It's only, well, four houses. But they're an acre and a quarter a piece. The house that I just built was one-point-three-three acres. So it's not anything out of the ordinary for the development. And I too know Howard Rainwater, and I know Bill Dean, and before they passed away. And the intent of this lot was actually, if you'll look at the old covenants, it was this, these, there was actually three lots there. So you could've had three houses as opposed to four, but it's zoned multifamily. So they were actually gonna put some apartments or something right there, 'cause that old abandoned road would've been accessed. And if you'll look at it, my real estate agent pulled it up, and it was zoned multifamily. I don't think that would do that place out there justice. It's a beautiful place out there. I mean, like I said, I just built the house out there, sold for top dollar. I mean, we just do things the right way. And what I'll do is, I think the easement was fifty-foot off of the road. Well, I hadn't backed it up another fifty-foot, so we're a hundred feet off of Woodview Terrace, just to set it back. 'Cause if you'll look, especially lot number four, it's one-point-two-four acres, and this is the one closest to the college. It's actually longer, right there. It's actually longer and a little bit more narrow, but it's a lot longer. I didn't think that it, and my wife, didn't think it would look good if we had it, you know, twenty-five or fifty-foot from the road. So we've taken into consideration and bumped everything back off of the road, just to make it aesthetically pleasing. I think that the houses that we're gonna build are gonna be between eighteen and twenty-one hundred square foot. Number four lot's already sold. I've got a young couple that's gonna, well, young, they're forties, got three little kids. And they're looking at building about a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot house, and it'll be nice. It'll, you know, quartz, yada, 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 all that stuff. And the corner lot, lot number one, is tentatively sold as well. And that one will be about twenty-five-hundred square foot, is what they're looking at. But they, when they're situated on the actual lot itself, they look really nice. They're not, they're not obtrusive from across the street or whatever. And I understand, you know, people don't like changes, they don't like, you know, the increased traffic. Well, four houses is not gonna increase that much. And that's what they're requiring me, and I think it was a letter that I got from you guys, on the end of it, they wanted a sixty-foot radius cul-de-sac. I was actually gonna, there's actually Chip and Seal Road that runs east and west. And I was gonna talk to Medina, or Mr. Medina, and ask him if that, if, maybe y'all could help, maybe. It's wide, and I know the turnaround for the fire trucks, but it's actually a road. I was thinking about seeing if I could do a hammerhead as opposed to having the extra cul-de-sac. 'Cause that'll actually go into, I believe, his property to make the cul-de-sac around a sixty-foot. It won't bother mine, it'll go into it. But I think a hammerhead right there, just for the fire trucks to turn back around, might be a little bit more efficient, less costly for me, for sure, so. Anyway, if you, I guess if you have any questions, here I am. I'm the one doing it, so.
Any questions?
I've got a couple of quick ones.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you remember what the choices were when there were three lots?
Yes, ma'am. About where lot one is, take that line down, probably forty-foot, straight down, and then bisect the remaining. And that's where, and I know that a lot of people aren't aware of this, but James Dean, Bill's son, is a real good friend of mine. He said they were gonna run a road all the way through there. So either way, that, there's a two-inch line that we just found when we were doing the site work, and it was live. It had water in it, so we're gonna cap that off to put the eight-inch. But either way, you can either have three houses or three multifamily units, or you can do it like this and make it a lot more susceptible. I think a lot prettier.
My other question, thank you. My other question has to talk to the concern about the houses being too close together. Can you speak to where the houses will be located on those?
Well, the lot four, the actual driveway, we're gonna have a south entry on that one. And the actual driveway will probably be almost right close to where the lot line is. So it's gonna be as far south as I can get it. And then lots two and three, they're pretty centered, is what we're thinking, depending on the size of the house that whoever buys it picks or whatever. And then lot one, there's another, there's an electrical line, if, I don't know if y'all can see it. Electrical easement going right, right, on the south side. Okay, there's an electric line, 'cause I wanted to move on lot one, the house, a little bit closer to where it's a little bit more narrow than have this open for like, you know, just to have a big yard or a swimming pool, 'cause that's customary for out there as well. But there's an electric service line going right through about where the lot line is on one and two. And we're taking, I didn't know if it was considered to have five and five on a ten-foot easement, so I just went twenty-foot on either side of it, and that's how I'm getting where the houses are probably gonna go. I wanna make sure that they're not close, 'cause I don't, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna buy a house that, you know, you look out your window and you see your neighbor, you know. So I'm getting them as far apart as I can. So lot one, it'll be as far north as I can get it, and four will be as far south, and then two and three, probably fairly centered. But you've got two-hundred and, I can't remember exactly, I think it was two-hundred feet or a hundred-and-eighty-seven feet on lot two, and then lot three. Lot three, a hundred-and-twenty. So if we move it closer, move basically everything closer that way, we should be good and have thirty, forty-foot between the houses. I mean, at least. That's just the easement lines.
So then, just to clarify, on the lot four?
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be a driveway to the, at the south part coming in from Woodview?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be a south entry to the garage.
Okay.
And it'll be a two-car garage. We usually make the two-car garages twenty-two by twenty-four, so they'll be plenty for Suburbans and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. Let me address a couple of things here before we proceed, that I don't know if you guys have been made aware of. One is how the state law affects plats. The city has a set of standards that we call criteria, that each parcel has to meet in order for it to be considered a plat within the City of Dennison. So before it arrives on our table, staff reviews all of those, the different criteria that's required, to make sure that they're all met before it gets to us. Once it's on our table by state law, if it meets that criteria, we have no choice but to approve it by state law. It has nothing to do with the City of Dennison, it has nothing to do with us. And I totally understand the frustration. I've said for years and years, why do you have a public hearing for people to oppose something that our hands are tied, and we have no choice but to approve? So the only way we can deny a plat is if there are variances that have been asked for. In this case, there are none, so we do not have any kind of flexibility as far as a denial of this request. Now, in one of the comments that I read, Mr., is it Tunnel, submitted, is that this particular plat, and this subdividing of this lot, does not comply with the covenants of the development. Now, if there are covenants that are filed with the county that are still in effect, because covenants do expire at a certain period of time, and if they're not renewed, or they don't have an automatic renewal in those covenants, then they become dormant, and they're no longer enforceable. If the covenants are still enforceable and they still exist, then that is the only recourse at this point that you guys, as homeowners and neighbors, have, okay? The city does not enforce covenants. They are filed with the county, and they are enforceable, but only in a court of law, to my knowledge. So that would be the only recourse that I can tell you guys that you have at this point, and that you probably wanna investigate. You know, as far as the lot sizes and everything, I mean, I don't see, from a design perspective, and that's what I do for a living, I don't see a real problem with them. I understand, I understand you guys, you're on big lots, and you wanna maintain that integrity. The one thing that came out in the testimony was that it was zoned multifamily. And if I was a resident, that would scare me a whole lot worse right now than four lots, because that could become, you know, a lot of units, if that's the zoning that's in place. And Bill, is that correct?
Mr. Shear, it is, in the ETJ, there are, there is no zoning, so our city ordinances and sort of zoning wouldn't apply.
So there is no zoning?
Yeah, there's no zoning, you can put...
Okay, so this was developed as a county property, and we've taken it into the ETJ?
Yeah, it's within the ETJ, so there's no zoning, so it could be a scrapyard or something else, too.
All right, so then the correction is there is no zoning in place? Okay, all right. Well, that's better, because if it had been zoned multifamily, I would've been overly concerned if I'd been you guys about that. I just need you guys to understand that this is the way the law's written by the state of Texas. City of Dennison has no control whatsoever over that, obviously, as we have no control over building materials anymore. The state has changed that law. Where residential construction within the City of Dennison now, the only thing to protect you from someone building a, you know, a barn dominium next door to you is if you have covenants in place. Because that metal siding is considered approved siding, and we cannot enforce any kind of material rules or regulations any longer in any of our single-family districts. Again, that's your state legislature at work, so take it up with them. So, if you have any questions of us concerning what I just said, I'll be happy to address them as best I can. If I can't answer them, then we'll turn it over to staff, and if staff can't answer it, then we can refer you to the city attorney to give you a better explanation. Yes, sir, come to the front, Mr. Tunnel.
Where would we go to pursue to find out whether or not this covenant was filed?
Grayson County.
I'm sorry?
Grayson County.
Grayson County?
Grayson County Clerk's Office.
Can you give me a name?
Just go to, just, you've got the name of the subdivision, you just go to the county clerk's office, which I believe is on the bottom floor over in Sherman at the county courthouse.
Great.
Just go in there and tell them you wanna research to see if there are deeds and covenants that are still in place, and you can give them the name of the subdivision, and they can pull that up.
I have a copy of the covenant, so I just didn't know for sure where to go.
If you'll look in those covenants, somewhere in that covenant addresses the expiration date, whether or not it automatically relieves.
It does not. The copy I have does not.
Okay, it should be in there, because that's pretty much, and of course, depending on when this was developed, and taking into consideration, too, it was developed in the county. So the county's specifications for plats and for developments and subdivisions is entirely different than when you get into a municipality. So what we would require within the city is a little bit more restrictive than what the county requires.
I can understand that.
And so that may be...
You know, and the covenants read that it's good for twenty-five years, and it automatically renews every ten.
Okay, there you go. You just answered the question. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion among the commission before I entertain a motion?
Do we have to, what do we do about the covenant possibility?
That's nothing, because we don't enforce them, so it's outside our scope. That's nothing, because we don't enforce them, it's outside our scope, so.
We just move forward.
Nothing, all right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat pending final engineering approval of required infrastructure plans.
Can I have a motion?
A second.
I have a second, Mr. Davis, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, sorry, guys, that's not the way you wanted it to end, but that's all we can do. All right, since there's no other business before the commission, is that correct? All right, we're going to entertain a motion, I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe and happy new year, and we'll see you back here the second Tuesday of January.
I think that's the twelve.
It is the twelve.
It's the twelve, yeah.
The twelfth of January? Okay, January twelfth?
I make a motion to adjourn, Sherman.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned at ten thirty-two.
Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
To Bill Medina.
Merry Christmas to y'all. Y'all take care.
Are you leaving town, Bill?
Well, all right, is that where you're from?
Cool.
Well, be safe.